I'd like to call a meeting to order, please. Would you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the Board of Aldermen meeting for Monday, October 20th, 2025. First order of business is, are there any additions, deletions, or other modifications anyone would like to make to the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. So, the motion is to approve the minutes, and it's been seconded. Any debate on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're on to public comment. So, this is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on an issue that is not on the agenda, that pertains to the city, and certainly you want to bring to the attention of the Board of Aldermen. So, if you would like to speak, I would just ask that you raise your hand, and I will gladly call on you.
Barbara's on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah. Elise, go ahead.
Good evening, and welcome, everybody. My name is Elise Hedlam. I am a resident of Rutland City, and I am on the Police Commission. I'm here this evening to express my support for the department's, the police department's ongoing recruiting and retention efforts, and to share some historical perspective from my 30 years of involvement with Rutland City Police Department. Over that time, I've seen tremendous growth and progress. Years ago, the department faced real challenges with morale and retention. Today, those have been replaced by pride, professionalism, and a genuine sense of teamwork. Officers are committed to the department and to serving our community, and I have had the privilege of being able to spend time with the officers and talk with them, and go on ride-alongs, and see this for myself. We've also seen clear results by going to Rutstat and Police Commission meetings, where the data analysis, Nate Thibodeau, presents data showing that overall criminal violations have decreased in 2025 from what they were in previous years. The one area of increase is drug enforcement. Actually, that reflects the department's proactive collaboration with other agencies to shut down the illegal drug operations in the city. And, you know, the department really has done an excellent job on that. The same spirit of collaboration continues with Project Vision, led by Commander Proudie, and through the initiatives of things like the neighborhood stabilization, the situation table, and community outreach, which are all proactive, preventive, and community-focused activities. These are important to keep in mind when we think about where the department is going. At the most recent voluntary physical fitness test, 29 of our individuals on the police department, men and women, from all ranks, including commanders, sergeants, detectives, animal control, data analysis, passed the rigorous assessment on their first attempt. Morale was evident at the test. As officers who had already completed the test, stayed to cheer on their colleagues. It was a wonderful time. We had a great time just cheering everybody on. Come on, you can do it, and it was amazing. One officer even completed the test successfully, wearing his full vest and equipment. These moments show pride our officers take in maintaining both their physical and mental readiness. When the department developed its wellness and fitness policies, members specifically requested Vermont Sport and Fitness and Killington because of the qualities of the facilities and the range of amenities that were available all year round. Keeping in mind that Vermont Sport and Fitness offers a level of privacy and security that public gyms cannot offer. This allows officers to exercise safely and to maintain appropriate professional boundaries with individuals that they may encounter in their work. I'd like to just reiterate the fact that the mayor was not involved in these discussions, and he recused himself from it, ensuring transparency and fairness through the process. For many of the most qualified candidates that we are finding, these benefits, the Vermont Sport and Fitness and the Killington Ski Passes, along with the department's strong leadership and culture, are part of what make Rutland PD a unique and forward-thinking employer. Just a few years ago, staffing had fallen to about 25 officers. The PD was struggling to get the city covered, was struggling because officers were often getting really overwhelmed with the amount of work that they had to do. Today, I'm happy to say we are now up to 33 and 34 active members, and recruitment routine remains strong. We've got officers who are potential officers, who are now in the works, ready to come onboard, and part of it is because of the recruiting that has been done. Finally, keep in mind, because I know this is an important thing for the Board of Aldermen, that the costs associated with these programs, Vermont Sport and Fitness and Killington Ski, were already included in the 2025 police budget. They were discussed at Police Commission meetings, reviewed by this board, and ultimately approved as part of the larger city budget. For these reasons, I hope the board will continue to support these initiatives, which have proven to strengthen the health, morale, and effectiveness of our department. I have, in 30 years, I have never seen or been associated with a department that is in the quality that it is now. It's in a wonderful place, and we really need to support it. Ultimately, it affects the safety and well-being of our city. So, I thank you for listening to me. I do have a handout with some points that can be used by you, and I know the chief handed out some of our recruiting information. Did anybody not get one? Would anyone like one?
I think we all got one. I think we got it.
I didn't know if everybody was here.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Thank you. So, Elise, thank you very much for coming in. I do have a couple of members of the board that have raised their hand. I think that they would either like to ask a question or say something briefly to this issue, and I certainly will allow it, but this is, you know, a time for the, for folks outside the rail to speak. So, Alderman Talbot, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to suspend the rules and take up this matter.
Motion to suspend the rules and take up this matter. So, procedurally, if I could ask, I believe it's been sent to committee.
It is in committee. But nothing precludes us at a regular meeting from taking up an issue that's been sent to committee.
Well, then, I'm going to ask for a recess very briefly and figure it out procedurally, and then we'll get right back to you. How's that? So, I just wanted to clarify exactly, as I said before. The issue was sent to committee, and it was not voted on at the last meeting. So, in other words, it's not been denied. There's been nothing that's been changed. There was an opportunity for the members of the board to have a debate at committee level. Understanding that, do you still want to make a motion to suspend the rules?
I do.
Okay. So, motion is to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a second. There's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules, and it's been seconded. So, I believe...
Just wanted to speak to the motion.
The motion, motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. We need six votes to suspend the rules. You have eight present, you need three-quarters. So, all those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion fails. Okay. All righty. Alderman Wickham.
Just to speak on this quickly. Elise, thank you for bringing this here. And I really do want us to be expeditious about talking about this in committee. I'm supportive of the gym membership as a benefit for the police department for all of the reasons mentioned. One of the things I also really take seriously, though, is trying to represent to the best of my ability every taxpayer, every member of this community. And one piece of feedback I quite distinctly heard was, we feel, from gym owners, we feel as though we don't even have the opportunity to solicit to the officers because they're funneled in one direction. It may be that, given a stipend, they all choose Vermont Sport and Fitness. I get it. I'm fine with that. All I hope for is the ability to discuss this and to look at what is the right way to do this, what is the right way, and hopefully allow everyone the opportunity to solicit their business.
Okay, thank you. So, Barbie, I did, I knew you were on the agenda, and I am going to get to you. But I think I'm going to try to finish this subject first, and then we will move along. So, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the issue? On an issue not on the agenda. And Officer Rice, if you'd like to, you certainly may. And thank you for coming. Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name's Tim Rice. I work for the Vermont Patrol Order of Police. I'm the vice president of that. We're the largest municipal representative agency of police officers in Vermont, and Vermont FOP is part of the National FOP, which is the largest representative agency of police officers in the country. I'm also an employee of the Rutland City Police Department as Mr. Alderman, or I'm sorry, President Alair said previously. I currently work in the Patrol Division. I've been here for, going on five years. Before this, I worked in Baltimore County, Maryland, for over five years, and I came here with experience. What drew me to Vermont was skiing. I picked where I wanted to live and work strictly around what we had to offer around our city. I had never been to Rutland before I came and applied. My first time in Rutland City was my interview with, Commander Whitehead was on my committee, Chief Cole Cullen, Commander Delphi, that was my first time in Rutland. So, these resources pool people. I came from over 500 miles away to this place for these resources that we had to offer. I was part of the recruitment team, and I still am. I'm one of, only two of us that still do it. And I also am part of the union negotiating committee as well. I was part of the MOU that we were talking about, took those benefits. And we solicited feedback from our officers for that MOU, and they specifically told us they wanted that specific gym. Nothing stops them from going to any of these other gyms. I don't think any of them have reached out to the union to be asked to be included in anything that I have received. I'm not sure about the city. Commander Whitehead might be able to speak further about that. But a couple of things that the union wanted me to express tonight here to the board was that we were very concerned that we didn't get any notification that this was going to be brought up to a vote, and that goes against the collaborative effort we have here in the city to collectively bargain. This is an MOU, and it did not have an expiration date, but it wasn't a guaranteed benefit. But we still usually have communication about these benefits. These are people's lives we're talking about. Myself, as an avid skier, I was already getting my skis ready because this time last year, this week, we had snow on the ground in Killington. So, snow is coming. Myself and another officer, who is very new to the department, we go 20-plus days a year together, plus what we go our own. So, we use these passes quite a bit. So, I had not purchased a pass because this benefit was in place up until two weeks ago. I looked at the Killington website of what this pass is going to cost me now, and it's about $2,000. So, within the next month, if I want to ski, I have to pay $2,000 that I was not expecting to pay. I have a child on the way in January, and my wife and I have a lot of other expenses. That $2,000 is significant to us now. It would have been quite a bit cheaper had we done this a lot sooner, when these passes went on sale in the spring, or even if we were able to get the Chamber of Commerce price that the city gets, it's less than half the cost of what it is to a consumer because the city has those relationships. Being part of the recruitment team, I do a lot with Killington. I was just up there the last couple of weeks, recruiting for the department with a lot of the materials that you see. I was the one who made that with a graphic designer, and we wanted to focus on those two benefits. Killington is, makes hundreds of millions of dollars per year, and we have access to that brand. That brand gives us power. They put stuff on their pages, they put stuff out to their followers, they put emails out to all their pass holders saying, hey, Rutland City Police Department has this benefit, and it costs the city taxpayers nothing for that. In the stuff that they put up last week, they had over 500,000 people view it just from our bike school that we hosted up there and the content that they put up there. It didn't cost the city taxpayer anything. Things that do cost the city taxpayer, things that I want to communicate are these that we just made. We have a lot of those because we have a recruitment incentive that we've been doing this summer. We did ads, we did partnerships with Killington, we did events there. Hundreds of hours of myself and Sergeant Morgano were spent on this. It's been very successful. We've had more applications in the last couple of months than we've had in, as Elise spoke, the drought that we had in the last couple of years. We've been seeing the applications. We're consistently getting people. Since this vote last session, we have not received a single interest card or a single application. As the one who does mostly recruiting for the department, before this, I had gotten many per week. Contacts or applications. More contacts than applications, obviously. But it was striking to see that complete zeros when I looked at it. Not a single contact in the last two weeks. People that we had spoken to and got applications that were in the process, we have to now notify them that the benefits have changed. What you may have thought was a benefit and a reason that you applied to this department is now gone. How does that look for a potential job seeker? I know I was working with one person from New Hampshire. He was a corrections officer, and he's no longer in the process. He wants security and benefits. He wants to know that what he's signing up for, what he's going to move his family to another state for is what he's going to get. And without security and benefits, my recruitment is kind of hampered quite a bit. I can't get people because I can tell them this is what we have right now, but it might change at any moment. That's why we have these contracts. That's why we have collective bargaining agreements. That's why we have, you know, these processes in place to have these discussions so that way we are properly notified and can give our people notice, hey, this is coming. Give us your feedback to give to these committees so that way we can appropriately express your concerns to them. But when we're not part of the process, we can't do that. Our people were blindsided by this. I found out the next day by Chief Cole Cullen that this happened. I didn't even know it was happening at all because it happened so quickly. Friday, the committee meeting, and then Monday, the vote. We didn't even know. We didn't have an opportunity. So, in summary, I would request action from the board to reconsider this motion. I appreciate Alderman Talbot's attempt to suspend the rules. Do that already. It's noted. I appreciate it. You also got a stack of letters from my officers, people that I represent as well, expressing their individual concerns. We wanted to do it that way so that way you could see, not just me up here speaking, you could see what this individual city employees, these taxpayer-supported people are feeling and how they feel about this decision because they're the ones that we are representing. You guys are representing taxpayers of Rutland City. I'm representing a section of employees of the city of Rutland. But we're all representing, in part, the city of Rutland, and these people want their voices heard, and the taxpayers deserve it. So, I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to ask or answer them.
I think we'll say thank you for coming. I appreciate it very much. And I think that you have another member of the Police Commission that would like to speak, and we thank you absolutely. Welcome, Peg.
Hello, Peg Florrie. I'm a member of the Police Commission, and I want to echo the statements that were just previously made. This is, this has been a big boost to recruiting. However, the other side of me also understands what the city is going through and trying to do the juggling and the way it's written without any end date. I get it. But that's what they were recruited on, that's what they were coping on. If the city wants to take some action, what my suggestion would be is to leave it as it is now. It's in the budget. Leave it as it is and set a date next year to reconsider, rewrite the memorandum or whatever you want, giving the police officers and their families and the commission, et cetera, appropriate notice so that if you end up deciding to stop the ski passes, at the very least, the policemen would be able to get their passes in the springtime when it's cheaper for them rather than at the last minute when it's the most expensive. And the same goes for the gym. I think, I feel strongly that the city should continue to carry both of these, that it's good for our recruiting, it's good for the morale. But if the board wants to take a second look at it, take a second look, set a time that in a year you're going to take another look, or a certain date that you're going to look at the memo of understanding and try to come up with some program to do it where everyone knows what's going to happen so that we're not recruiting, frankly, under false promises. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it. And anybody else outside the rail who would like to speak on an issue?
I'd like to speak to this.
Yeah, I know you would, Alderman Talbot. And I'd be glad to call on you. We have one other person who wants to speak, so go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I think that, you know, delaying and sending it to committee is the wrong move. We've heard that timeliness is important here. The no vote at our last meeting left a bad taste in a lot of the officers' mouths, and it did damage to the city's reputation. And I think we have an opportunity here to repair that damage by moving quickly to restore these benefits. And I think it is, you know, will be another mistake and another black mark on the city to delay and wait for a committee meeting.
Thank you very much. Again, we could get into a big debate here. This is outside the rail. This is an opportunity for people from the public to speak. Alderman Tadio, certainly we'll call on you, but I just want to remind people that this is an opportunity for...
I will keep it very brief. I just will echo what Alderman Talbot said. I think that there is no need to delay. We should be voting on this issue tonight, and we should be proceeding with supporting the police and the recruitment efforts. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Anyone else? I know, Barbara, you've been very patient over there, and I appreciate it. Looks like you're up. So, please.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I am Barbara Spalding, and I would like to invite the Aldermen and the public to tour the Bellevue Avenue Haunted House. Tours are one night only, October 31st, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m., and all donations support the Mentor Connector Activity Fund. The Haunted House was started in 2003, but in 2016, when I became a mentor, we decided to turn the event into a fundraiser. Over the past nine years, except for a couple closings, we have raised over $2,500 for the organization. With me tonight is Kumari Noel, who was matched with me in 2016, and now we are Mentor Vermont ambassadors. I am very, very proud of her. And as ambassadors, we are asked to share what mentoring has meant to us.
Welcome, Kumari.
Hi.
Hi. You go right ahead. Don't be nervous. You're fine.
So, when I was seven years old, my sister introduced me to Mentor Connector. And though at the time I didn't understand what it was, throughout the past nine years, I fortunately have been introduced to an amazing, eye-opening, and inspiring, loving relationship. When people ask me about Mentor Connector, I find it hard to use one word to describe this wonderful organization because it's truly so beneficial in so many ways. Mentor Connector has given me not only a leader to look up to, but a friend for life, and I'm very grateful for this organization. And I highly recommend to others to become a mentor or a mentee to not only benefit one's life, but also the community's.
Wonderful. You did a terrific job. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming. All right. One last call for outside the rail. We have one more taker. Yes, please. You're welcome.
So, last time we met at the public meeting, I talked about some stuff which everybody here thinks that this was a landslide, but 10%, this isn't on the venue, is it, tonight?
No, it's not. And all I was going to do was just politely ask for your name and address for our clerk.
Zachary Pratt, 97 North Street, East End.
Thank you very much.
In the beautiful city of Rutland.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, this was considered a landslide, but it was only 10% of the voters. To me, a landslide would be, what did I have here? 9,608 people coming out to vote on this issue. That's 85% of the population. Because the population, according to this document, which is a certified town clerk's document that tells how many people are registered to vote in Rutland and how many people actually voted. So, that to me is a real low turnout, and 10% of the people deciding what 90% of the people want to do doesn't seem right, but it was a vote. Another thing I want to point out about this vote was when I first found out about TIF, I went to the TIF summary page, and down there it goes from September, obtained first-phase BPEC approval, and then it says November 2025, citywide bond vote for funding. So, this was never updated or changed or anything. So, anybody out there that went to the TIF website to look at the summary sees that this date was November 25th. Now, there's a special meeting called, I know it was announced in all these different public meetings that this was going to take place in, but from my point of view, a lot of people like myself just said, okay, I got plenty of time. I don't have to worry about this. So, the other thing was I brought up issues that I thought were important to the town, and I'm not going to go in detail, but UVM's Health Assistance Program for prescriptions is going to go away for 650 people, which I got information from, well, I went to the Green Mountain Care Board in Rutland and for UVM, and the person that was in charge there, Mr. Eppen, is no longer there, but he sent me the details on how many people were in the program and how many would be losing it. So, those 650 people are going to lose an average of $1,050 if they don't get a UVM primary care provider. So, that means about $665,000 will not be available to people unless they change and find a UVM primary care provider. Well, to do that, the closest one is in Brandon. That's the closest place where you can find a UVM primary care provider. Next one would be up in Middlebury, and then, of course, Burlington. So, if you want your prescriptions paid for, that's where you'd have to go. And they have different criteria, too, in order to have that happen. But if all those 650 people, like I'm in community health here, if I drop my community health person and go someplace else, and all these other 650 people do, that's going to leave a hole here for the primary care providers. Now, to me, that's a big issue. The other thing I talked about was this connected action, or the BUT4. So, when I worked in the federal government, a contractor, a private person wanting to do something on public land, it was considered a connected action in BUT4, but the person or the business actually paid for the work to get it done. If we had a road there, and they're going in it, but they're going to sink an oil well, well, they had to maintain it, they had to widen it, they had to... well, they had to maintain it, they had to widen it, they had to pay for everything. There was no taxpayer putting money into it. And the other thing, it's hard to imagine that this contractor can't pay for the work to support the development he's putting in or she's putting in, because I just got a $2.5 million contract from the city, that was in my water bill, which I was surprised to see. And that big beldin thing they had, crane that they had at the end of the road down there for trunk or treat, that cost about $998,000. So that's almost a million dollar rig right there before taxes. So it surprises me that they can't afford to do the work themselves. So, I worked at Metro Mail. I don't know if any of you here had a chance or an opportunity to work at Metro Mail. So it was for Reader's Digest, they sent out all sorts of stuff like this with business paid, you know, on it postage, my name or occupant or something. So I was a bagger and a stock handler. So I even got one here from a nonprofit for 10 cents postage on it. Well, I found this hanging on my mailbox, and that is by federal law, a $10,000 fine to put this on there. And I was wondering, well, who the heck would have put this on my mailbox? But I put the red circle with the no on it. That wasn't on this. And this is called the door hanger, because it's supposed to go on doors, not on mailboxes. People aren't allowed to put stickers or anything on your mailbox. So it looks like paid for by the Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region. So it looks like they're the ones that put this hanger on my mailbox. So, I have the manual from the post office, it's 508 Recipient Services in Under 3.1.3, except under 3.1.1, receptacles described in 3.1 may be used only for matters bearing postage, other is permitted. No part of mail receptacle may be used to deliver any matter not bearing postage, including items or matters placed upon, supported by, attached to, hung from, or inserted into the mail receptacle. Any mailable matter not bearing postage and found as described above the subject, the same postage that would be paid by any other carrier.
So Mr. Pratt, politely, I'm just going to ask if there is something that you wanted to direct to the board?
Yes.
If there isn't...
I would like the board to have the Rutland Economic Development Person either pay the fine or pay the postage for 11,112 people, which would be $8,589.36.
Well, you're on the record for making that request, and we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. I think that is it for Outside the Rail tonight, and we are going to move along to communications from the mayor.
Great, thank you very much.
Mayor Dungus, thank you, welcome. I know you have a couple of things here for us, so go right ahead.
So first on the list, I'd like to request that the board untable the nomination for Jared Blake and circulate the ballot box for...
Why don't we suspend the rules?
Move to untable the motion.
Suspend the rules and take the issue up tonight.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And I'll move to remove from the table the nomination for the Rutland Planning Commission, Jared Blake.
Second.
All righty. Motion's been made to circulate the ballot box and remove from the table. It's been seconded, any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion...
I moved to circulate the box, ballot box.
Yeah, I added that in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're good to go. So Susan is going to make her way around, thank you very much, and then I will turn back to the mayor, and he can go right ahead.
Great. As the ballot box is circulating, as you notice on your desk, I placed a nomination document. On that document, we have an appointment for Alex Adams to the Board of Aldermen, and an appointment of Gina Grove to the RRA. I'd ask the board to vote to, sorry.
I'll move the table, those nominations.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to table the aforementioned two nominations, and it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Great, thank you very much. You, both candidates have said that you feel free to reach out to them over the next two weeks while you're waiting. I will be sending contact information, and our executive director, Sean, will be sending information for Gina as well.
And I know there's at least one here tonight, so I appreciate that very much.
Absolutely. So the TIF bond vote did pass with 85% of those voting to support the bond, and while it was 10%, one of the things that the research shows is that those most concerned about a vote like that will come out for a special election. So I do want to thank the community and those who did come to vote for their overwhelming support of the TIF bond. I know it seems like it was a while ago, but it really was just less than two weeks ago. So thank you Rutland for supporting this as we move forward. This is the kind of beginning of some new development and some new efforts in our space. And as we know, and I do want to reiterate, because I know some of the news outlets kind of got it confused, all of the increment dollars are going to public infrastructure, and that is a key factor, right? These are not dollars going into the private development, but these are going into public infrastructure. The mayor's task force on the downtown plaza has been meeting over the last few months, and we took some action recently where we reached out to Brixmore again to talk about a bigger discussion of departure of Walmart. Now, I know the board already has this conversation in committee, but I do think, I would encourage the board to maybe hold another committee meeting soon, and we can get an update. There are a few board members that are on the task force, but I do know that it's kind of hard to get to some of those meetings, but I'd be happy to, along with Sean, and the RRA is now in charge of the task force and running it and scheduling and managing that, but I do think that it might be a good time for an update at some point here. But there are ongoing discussions with the property owner, with a couple of other organizations, and we saw that Walmart did get the demolition for the old mall, so they just continue to move in that path, and I just wanted to keep everybody updated there. I wanted to shout out a quick thank you to the police department. I drove by the protest at Main Street Park this weekend, and one of the things that was very present is the amount of PD that was there. We had officers on bikes, vehicles, they had the road, you know, set up so that they could manage traffic flow, and it was actually a very safe event, and that's always nice to see, regardless of what side of events you're on, or regardless of what type of protest. Our police department has always been very good about making sure that people are safe during those events. I did get a couple of phone calls from constituents specifically saying how much they liked seeing our officers riding around on bikes during the event, so I thought that was pretty good. So wanted to put that out there. Also wanted to thank the police department, the fire department, and DPW for participating in truck or treat. You know, an event like that, there's a lot of exposure, tons of families downtown, a lot of people seeing what's going on, and to see our equipment out there and our guys out there doing their thing is fantastic. When we talk about Halloween events and one of those sets of efforts, you can't be remiss without talking about what's going on at the rec department and all the efforts they've been putting in. So speaking of those events, starting on Saturday, we have the Running Scared 5K. It's going to start at Giorgetti Athletic Complex, the race begins around 9:00 AM, and just for constituents, look out for road closures starting around 8:30 and ending at 10:00 AM for that. And then, of course, later that evening, we have the Rutland City Halloween Parade that'll be livestreamed on PEG TV. Road closures will begin around 4:45, and it starts at 6:30 PM. There are 91 entries and roughly 1,700 individuals that'll be walking in the parade, so that's a fantastic event, and Rutland Recreation Parks Department puts that on, along with help from other departments, so make sure you come out to that event. That is it for me this evening.
That is it for you. And before you go, we have the results of the vote on the nomination of Jared Blake, nine yes, zero no. So he's appointed. And I think Alderman Gillum had a question for you.
My question.
Okay. That's for you, Bill.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. I'd like to move the plaza issue to the Community Development Committee, so it's in committee when we have to deal with it when it comes up.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion that's been made and seconded to refer. Any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
One more thing?
Yep.
I'm strongly suggesting board members to show up at the parade, because they've got to carry a sign, and I'm not doing it by myself. I know Tom's going to be there, so it'll be two of us anyway. President's going to be, that's three, there you go.
Great. And then Jared is here tonight, so if anybody had any questions before we move on? Okay, great, thank you very much.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. Okay. Getting back to the agenda, consideration of special event permits, Halloween street closure request, Chris Call, East and Terrell, and East and Edgerton. You'll find some information on pages seven through nine of your packet tonight, and there you are, welcome. And thank you for coming.
Thank you. I'm Chris Call at 28 East Street here in Rutland, brought my husband here Mitch for support. So like the Spaldings, we are really into Halloween, so if you've ever been by our house at 28 East Street, you see we kind of go all out, we really enjoy it. And we've been decorating for Halloween ever since we moved here about eight years ago, and it's been a fun neighborhood tradition. What started with about 100 trick-or-treaters has now grown, and last year we had just under 400. With Halloween falling on Friday this year, we're anticipating close to 500 little ghosts and goblins coming. As many of you know, East and Terrell is a very busy intersection, we frequently see cars rolling through the stop sign and speeding down East Street. And on Halloween night, the big of heavy traffic and vehicles becomes a real safety concern. We usually have a neighbor out there helping direct traffic, or my husband, and on a few occasions, the police will stop and kind of direct traffic and help us out when it gets really congested. So to keep everyone safe and to make the night more enjoyable, we're asking if East could be closed from Terrell and Edgerton from 5:00 to 9:00 that evening. That's it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. What is the board's pleasure on this issue? Alderman, down here.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve that request based on the department heads that have weighed in on it, and with their directions, which is, as I understand it, the north side of Terrell, East Street is the north side of Terrell.
Correct.
To the south side of Edgerton. So that Terrell and Edgerton themselves remain open up to Woodstock Avenue and down east, but that block then becomes...
Yeah, so on Terrell, they would still be able to go southbound on East. It just gives a little bit more space for the kids not to go running across the street, and, you know, people can still safely make a turn and not onto East, not northbound on the East.
Okay, so why don't we suspend the rules, take the issue up tonight?
I'm going to suspend the rules, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Seconded, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. And a motion to approve?
Yeah, based on the input of the department heads and with the parameters that we just outlined, which is north side of Terrell, east of the north side of Terrell to the east to the south side of Edgerton.
Second.
And it's been seconded, okay. And I did see those, and I think the board got requests, or got that information by email. Alderman Kuply.
Have we, in the past, closed streets in the city of Rutland? For Halloween?
Yes, a couple of different times.
William Street.
We have closed Bellevue, and we have closed Chestnut once, which is right back of me, where the church is. So it's not, oh, twice, twice, excuse me. So, but anyway, there is precedence for it.
And there has been no issues?
Not that I'm aware of. Anybody want to chime in on that one?
If I may, I think the one that you're talking about was sponsored by a church one year, and they had a disc jockey, a block party type of things. I'm not sure that the Haunted House on Bellevue requests that the street get closed, I think sometimes the police does that. I don't believe there's a request from, Barbara could speak to that. I don't have a problem with this, but I think there's a lot of streets that get a lot of kids. It's not just Terrell, you know, any, like Crescent, Baxter, anything that's got any length to it, Jackson, get a number of kids, and I just want to, I'm just hesitant that we don't get one every street, because I think that's going to be difficult at that point for any public safety vehicles to move around.
Alderwoman McClure.
I just want to take a moment to say, I think that this is a great idea. I grew up in this neighborhood, well, late teens, and I had much younger siblings who enjoyed trick-or-treating at the Call's house, they loved seeing it every year. I think that this is a fantastic step forward in momentum for how Rutland celebrates Halloween. It's so ingrained in our local culture, from being in shout-outs of DC Comics for Halloween to having the oldest Halloween parade. I personally see no issue with beginning a trend of shutting down streets on Halloween night that are high-traffic streets for the safety of kids. I think that we have a great opportunity to encourage pedestrian infrastructure and encourage our youth to be active and explore their community on foot in ways that kids nowadays really don't get to do anymore. So many people want to go back to the good old days of when you could walk down the street and say hello to your neighbors, and this is a great way to do that. So I will be wholeheartedly supporting this, and I hope to be more just like it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? So the motion is to approve the request with the aforementioned variables. Seeing no further debate, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Do you have, do you have any information that the department has put on your person? I don't know, you can take that. Okay, just thank you. I never see those by email, but thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, moving along. Reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up, Barbara, you are back. It looks like you have a recommendation for a BIAP grant.
I do.
Okay.
So on Tuesday, September 23rd, the RRA board met to review the Business Incentive Assistance Program application for the Rustic Magnolia Flower Shop located at 230 North Main Street, Building 3, Taylor Park in Rutland. The applicant, Nicole Powell, is requesting a $5,000 BIAP grant to assist in opening a retail florist shop, and will feature workshops, events, and an eco-friendly, it is eco-friendly using recycled products when possible. I'll let her speak to those. And then the application meets the criteria with over $25,000 of new financial investment. In October 14th, the RRA board moved to recommend to the alderman approval of a $5,000 BIAP grant to the Rustic Magnolia Flower Shop, and copies of the BIAP and application and business plan were sent to you. And Nicole is here tonight to speak to her application.
Okay, please do. Oh, welcome.
Thank you. So I am Nicole Powell. I am the owner of the Rustic Magnolia Florist and Gifts. We are going to be a full-service florist from weddings and events to sympathy work to everyday flowers. If you need a bouquet to go to the Paramount, we're your location to go. We definitely want to create a sense of community where we are. We want to have open nights where you can come in and have hors d'oeuvres and make a centerpiece for Christmas, or, you know, have the kids come in and do a bouquet for mom for Mother's Day, or Halloween, we're going to do next year, we're going to do paint pumpkins and have, you know, donuts and cider. So that's something we're really excited about. The nice thing is, is our location is in Taylor Square up on North Main Street. We now have, above me is an event planner, the Event Sisters are upstairs, and then we have Nailed It Salon, which is right across the way. We also have the Wellness Cafe, which is there too, is catering. So we're kind of like a event little Mecca right there, which is kind of, it's going to be really neat. We've all kind of talked, we're really excited to work together, so that's something we're working towards. As a part of what we are going to do, our gift shop will be about 30%, our floral department will be about the 70% of what we will do. All of our gifts will be, hopefully, the goal will be more Vermont tailored. I have several people who have come to me that want to sell their product, from birdhouses to hand-drawn cards, to gorgeous paintings, things like that, but we'll also have fun gifts for kids and family members as well. Our goal is to collaborate with the city. We would love to get involved with trunk or treat, or even the Whoopi Pie Festival, things like that, that is really important to us. I have worked at different flower shops, I also worked at a law firm for 11 years, and for me, that was something that was missing, is being part of my community, and I really feel that that's important to us. All the girls that are coming on board with me all feel the same, which I'm really excited about. When you step into our flower shop, we want you to feel like family. You want a cup of coffee? We'd love for you to have a cup of coffee while you're waiting for your flower arrangement to be ready. We want people, we want to hear your stories, you know, from your, how you... We want people, we want to hear your stories, you know, from your, how you met, you know, your future husband or your future wife to a family member that passed. That is something that I really take to heart. And that's something that I brought with me opening our shop. As we open our shop, sustainability is going to be super important to us. From building our cooler, we actually have recycled a whole, they're the four-inch foam boards from the bus company that were, when they tore down the bus company, we recycled them. My husband went down and purchased, I think, 14 to 16 of them, and that's going to go towards our cooler, and that saved us just under $2,000. And we're recycling it. So that's something that is important. Most florists use foam for all their stuff. We will have to use a little bit, but we're going to be switching over to chicken wire. So that way, it is something that we can reuse and recycle. We also will be doing, if you want to bring your vases in, we're going to give you $5 off your bouquet. If you bring a lot more in, then we'll do a little bit more. Our veterans, our military, our police officers, ambulance, paramedics, fire are all going to get 20% off. And you just let me know that that is what you do. That is really important to us. All schools, prom, things like that, they're going to get 10% off. We want the schools to know that we're there to help them. If they've got a dance going on, or if they want to do a fundraiser, we want to make sure that it's doable for them. We want to make sure, waste-wise, we have the go-ahead from the owner, Tracy Taylor himself, to do a compost bin out back. And I am a scout master of 116 Troop in West Rutland, and all of our scouts want to do that as a service project, so we're really excited about that. The $5,000 grant will be going in specifically into our cooler head unit itself to kind of bring that to life. It is also helping us recreate a little bit of the building space, kind of building out a little bit. And then the inventory that's going to be coming into the shop in the next couple of weeks, that's where it will help us out. It is, for us, it's going to be an investment into our community. Right off the bat, we'll have three employees. During holiday seasons, we're up to eight. We have to have drivers. We have to have seasonal help, so that is going to be part of where we are. We also want to make sure that we're going to offer floral classes. If you want to have, you know, if you want to do a fundraiser and you want to have classes, I have a dentist office for Middlebury who's coming down with all of his hygienists and assistants, and they're going to be doing a fun flower arranging day. So that's something that's super important to them. When we open up our storefront, we don't feel like we're doing it alone. We feel at Taylor Square, it is a whole community there now, especially with this little mecca that we have going on. So I really appreciate your consideration. I really appreciate your time, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Okay. All right. Very good. So, a motion to suspend the rules would be in order?
Yeah, motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
All righty. Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
And I will move to approve the $5,000 buy-up grant to the Rustic Magnolia Flower Shop Limited Company.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion been made, and it's been seconded. Alderman Gillum.
Mr. President, I need to make the board aware that this young lady behind me is a scout master here in the region. I actually work for her because I am the Southern Vermont executive.
I was wondering who your boss was, Bill.
Yes, so I work for all the units, so just that disclaimer, I just want to make sure the board knows that before I vote.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Any other questions for our guests tonight? Yes, Alderman Donahue.
Just want to compliment them as well as the Redevelopment Authority on a well-thought-out and comprehensive business plan. We appreciate that and all of it being in the board pack. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I will just say you are a terrific salesperson. Because that was very well done. All righty. I guess I'm not supposed to say what my opinion is, but it was very well done. Okay. Seeing any further debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Welcome, Bill. Thank you.
Good evening.
Yep.
Good news from the state of Vermont. The local hazard mitigation plan that you folks approved, the modifications of last week have come back, and they passed in our science factory as far as the state of Vermont. So tonight, I'm before you to ask you to consider adopting the plan and to authorize the president of the board to sign on your behalf stating all the criteria that was in the appendix A.
Okay, so we're going to need a motion to suspend the rules.
I'm moved.
Second.
All righty. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. And I'm going to ask, as the chief has asked, for a motion to adopt the plan, authorize the board president to sign, and if, when voting, if you could raise your hand because the requister, which is the chief, I guess the feds, need an exact count of how many people are going to be voting for or against the plan.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Okay. Any debate on it? Rather lengthy. All those in favor of the motion, could you please raise your hand? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Those against? Zero. Motion passes. Okay, you're welcome. Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, Treasurer Markowski has sent us a financial report for the first quarter ending 9/30/2025, and for the city and the RRA, and she's requesting a referral to the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is to refer, and it's been seconded. Any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Sean Atkins. Sean, you are up next. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Signing my name here as we're moving along, but the floor is yours. Go right ahead.
Thank you. It's a little bit misleading, which is my fault, for two new proposals. One of them is not a proposal, although I suppose you could vote on it or send it to committee. It's just simply what I believe is our first-ever business retention expansion program. Just in our eco-dev world, I just, like I put in your email, it's just kind of like a 101. It's kind of like a foundational tenet of economic development. Not even really a policy, but like a lighthouse. You know, like we can see where we're going. It's also a fluid document, so that's kind of, you can vote on it if you think to or send it to committee, but it's, in my opinion, it's not necessary. It's just kind of like, all right, this is what we're looking for, this is what we're going for, and it can change. You know, it's again, it's very fluid, doesn't influence voting or a lot of decisions, really. It's just kind of a, this is where we're going. This is what we like to see, and, you know, et cetera. The one genuine proposal is the Lift Rutland Program. Part of that would potentially replace the $10,000 forgivable loan with a $10,000 reimbursable grant. And that's more geared towards fixed upgrades instead of equipment. But we still will leave with this proposal, $5,000 that she just got for other general expenses, to allow that kind of leeway within, within our systems. I think the $5,000 is great. It's also built-in bedding. The reimbursable grant makes sure that you can't really, well, just, it avoids worst-case scenario. I'll just put it that way. I don't know if you are able to or feel like approving this tonight or want to put it to committee. I'm happy to answer quick. I could talk a long time about that. I'm a nerd about this stuff, but I'll let you guys.
Okay. So let's see what the board's pleasure is. Alderwoman McClure.
I just had a question about, so these fixed upgrades. What do you mean? Can you kind of define that for us?
Yeah, there's, I don't know how much you can zoom in on this, but there is a very clear, and this is also, we can talk through this in committee or whatever, very clear chart of eligible and ineligible expenses. Yeah, it'll be, yeah, we'll skip the visuals for right now. So eligible carpentry, woodwork, plumbing, new windows, storefronts, painting, that type of thing. Eligible right now, as proposed, be awnings, fencing, you know, all that type of thing. So it basically allows, or in theory prevents somebody from getting a grant and then a year or two leaving with what we gave them the money to purchase. So, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
In a quick nutshell.
Okay. So what's the board's pleasure? Alderman Donahue.
I would make a motion to suspend the rules and vote to approve the lift program.
Okay, let's suspend the rules and seconded. Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll make a motion to approve the lift program as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any debate questions? Alderman Donahue.
So Sean, I don't have a problem with this, but I do have a couple of questions. So if tax stabilization or exemptions or wastewater reduction, that will come to this board for discussion.
That's still separate.
Okay. But it still comes to this board as, because you listed as part of a incentive.
Yes.
Type of thing. Right. But it would still come to this board for discussion, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, it'd be the same process as for.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else? Yes, Alderman?
I'll speak to the fact that with the buy-up $10,000 forgivable loan, we did face a lot of issues both at this board and at the RRA board level with sort of folks whose businesses didn't succeed for any number of reasons, what to do. And I think this really is a smart way to address that problem.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay, great. Anyone else? Alderman Donahue.
Yeah, just whether or not we would be changing the mechanism for the implement, no, not the implementation, but the facilitation of the, of the loan and the approval of the loan process and collection of the funds and all those things that went through Cornerstone Housing Partnership, right?
For, that's a different program. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's for the RLF.
Okay. So this is really separate from that?
Correct.
Great. So that won't change?
Nope.
So this is all through the Redevelopment Authority?
Yes, it's changing the $10,000 forgivable loan into the Lift, face lift grant.
Right, so running through your.
Same funding grant, yeah. Same funding mechanism.
And start over there and end up over here.
I conflated the two. Sorry.
That's quite all right.
Lot of stuff going on, yeah.
That's okay. Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. And finally, under reports and letters, we have Superintendent Chaffey. Looks like we have a couple of contracts that we would like to bring before the board. April, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. I haven't been able to personally thank everyone, so thank you so much for your support. I'm really excited to hit the ground running, and this is my first time in front of the podium in this position, so I, I think I'm doing it right, but if I'm not, please correct me. I'm okay with that. Please do.
You're fine. You're fine.
So you should have received both of the agreements that are for the upcoming Georgette season. These are two heavy-use groups. You've got your Rutland Amateur Hockey Association as well as the Rutland Rocks Curling Club. So I, and tell me if I'm doing this wrong, I would move that the board authorize the mayor to sign the Georgette Arena Ice Rental Agreement 2025-2026 for Rutland Rocks Curling Club and Rutland Amateur Hockey Association respectively.
Okay. So, you're close.
I'm close.
Alderman Donahue.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made to suspend, and it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
And I guess I'll make them separate, two separate motions, but I will make a motion to have the, approve the mayor to sign the Raha contract for the 2025-2026 season.
Second.
Okay. So the motion's been made to approve the contract for the Amateur Hockey Association use of Georgette for the upcoming season. It's been seconded. Debate? I'm just going to ask a quick question. Did we have any attorney review any of this?
Absolutely, yes. So.
Because we don't have one on.
No, it's okay. Matt Blumer has reviewed both of these contracts, and he made adjustments from what was previously in place, and that's what we went off of.
Okay, great. Yep, thank you. Any debate on this one? This is Raha. Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. And now the second one.
And I will also move for the approval of the Rutland Rocks Curling Club Georgette Arena Ice Rental Agreement for the 2025-2026 agreement and for the mayor to sign.
Second.
All righty. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions for April on these and on this motion?
I just want to make a comment that the new trailer and all that equipment is coming online.
Yes.
So they're going to have a good time this year.
And what I was going to just, in addition, if you folks at all would like a, you know, kind of back and preview of like the new equipment, I was there this morning. It's absolutely beautiful. Everything is running really well. It wasn't without its hiccups, but the crew did an amazing job navigating those, and the ice looks spectacular, very vibrant lines out there. So I do encourage you to reach out to our Parks Department and take a visit.
Alderman Gillum.
We have a very good investment there. I saw all the equipment because I did the day camp down there, so I saw the guys working on that equipment, and they were bringing all that huge stuff in by tackle and block. So there is a lot of big equipment down there to make sure that system works really well, and I think that was well worth the investment.
Okay, good. Anyone else? Motion is to approve. Okay, good. Anyone else? Motion is to approve, it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Good.
You're all done!
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very successful on your first meeting.
Okay, so, reports of standing committees, I see none. Select committees, there are none. Reports of representatives, we're all set there. So, under petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications, you have a entrance here for Brock Community Action Social Service Article Request. So, it's my information, after speaking with the acting clerk here, that there's been no changes to that request, so that will, actually does not need any action from the board. It will be placed on the ballot, so I would ask that you would receive and file.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is to receive and place on file, it's been seconded. Any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion?
I'll recuse myself, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Alderman Donahue recuses himself on this one.
President, I think we should probably explain to people at home what we just did.
You can go right ahead and explain.
Yeah, my friend here next to me had put a petition into, for social services, his ten thousand dollar grant. The policy is, if you increase it, is when you need to go back to get a, what do we call it?
Have to get signatures.
Signatures, to put it on the ballot. But since he's not increasing it, it remains the same, it will go on the ballot.
Okay, well, thank you. Alrighty, so again, the motion is to receive and place on file, it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Okay, thank you. Control Commissioners, none. Cannabis, none. Unfinished business. We're on to unfinished business. And Alderman Gillen?
All business falls onto that?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I need to bring to the board, to their attention, that we made a little error on the Public Works Committee meeting. Not the committee's fault, but Tom informed the commissioner that he gave, he gave us the wrong number. The number's supposed to be a hundred dollars, not two hundred dollars, for the Public Works Water Department, two thousand twenty-five hydrant, fire hydrant test fee. What he told Bob was a hundred, was a hundred for the year. Bob thought it was a hundred for two, and I made it two hundred dollars. So, what my motion's gonna be, most, I needed to suspend the rules first, to take that matter up.
Yep. So, the motion is to suspend, seconded. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, go ahead.
So, to approve the raise the fees to the Public Works Water Department, two thousand twenty-five fire hydrant maintenance fee to one hundred from two hundred, per year, for private hydrants, including the outside of the city limits. And I so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Everybody understand what the...
So, how this works?
Yep.
They do it twice, so it was supposed to be fifty-fifty, a hundred for the year, but Bob thought it was a hundred, hundred. That's why he came in with two hundred.
That's fine. Alrighty, any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other unfinished?
I just have a question, maybe of the mayor.
Yep.
So, it's been a while since we put the lighting question on the city webpage. Maybe next meeting, you can give us an update on how it was responded to, and whether or not we're gonna see a click up in some lighting.
Sure, absolutely, happy to do it.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business, before the board, Donahue.
Yeah, okay. So, I just wanted to mention one thing. On our way down here, noticed the gazebo lit up, and it looked fantastic in Main Street Park. It really looked good. So I wanted to compliment the new superintendent on that. Secondly, just wanted to put a plug in for Wheels for Warmth. So this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday in October, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, will be the fundraiser, if you will, by this community at Casella Construction in Pittsburgh, where people donate tires, and then the tires go into a sale on Saturday for people who can't afford brand-new tires, get a really great price for a set of tires, and all of those proceeds, through this program, go to the Crisis Fuel Fund for this community. So, last year, they set a record number of twenty-nine thousand dollars, so, very generous community, but I just wanted to put a plug in. If you've got those tires in your garage, and in your backyard, or your cellar, or whatever, clear the space, we can use them. And if you're looking to get on a good set of tires, Saturday's the day, at Casella Construction on Route Seven North, and I appreciate the opportunity to turn that into a crisis fuel for people in need this winter in Rutland County. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Alderman Donahue?
Yeah, I'd just like to make one more request, that this board consider suspending the rules and taking up the matter of extending the recruitment benefits to the Police Department. It's in this year's budget. There's no reason the committee still can't meet and come up with a plan to extend gym opportunities at other facilities to the officers, but I think it would send a message, a much-needed message of support, to at least the nineteen officers that wrote to us and told us that they wanted to see these benefits restored. And it does sound like time is of the essence, so I'd make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay.
Well, we don't have an attorney here, but I don't know, the suspension of the rules failed, so it has to be...
It can be reintroduced by consultant.
By the majority. You are not in the majority, so I don't know that that's a proper, proper thing, just saying. I think the issue's been in committee for two weeks. We need to have a meeting called, and we can get resolution. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding. The board didn't end the benefits. The chief brought it to us, that they had, it was only for one year, and had ended. There was no funding, how we were shared, I have the minutes sitting here, that we needed to, that it was always a temporary benefit, these are the chief's words, and whether he wanted them extended for six more months. Then there was discussion about, you know, opportunities for other entities to bid on it, or whether or not some of the city gym could be used, as the taxpayers are paying for these services. But there was never a discussion that they were going to be ended, that they weren't gonna be supported. That's why it went to committee. So those concerns could be addressed, how it was funded could be addressed. Appropriate questions were asked, how many of the employees used the benefit, what was the total cost for the benefit, all of that was there. So, I think those are discussions that are worth having.
So, the chair, understanding the rules, Alderman McClure, I do see your hand, and I just want to explain what I believe is the interpretation of the board rules. We've already taken a vote on that tonight, it failed. A motion would be, in order to reconsider, would have to be done by either someone who was not present, or someone that was in the, on the winning side, I believe, is what the...
Want a clarification? Are you saying that's in the Board of Alderman rules?
Well, it's the way I interpret the rules, as best I can right now. So, I don't believe you can just repeatedly make the same motion over and over again at the same...
According to what I've read in Robert's rules, you can.
Yeah, but we're going by board rules.
Board rules don't address it.
You can challenge the chair.
Yeah, there's no support for that here, so it's a wasted time.
Okay, all right. Alderman McClure.
I just have two things. One, I would love to make a formal request for a copy of the rules of the Board of Alderman, as reviewed by our current outside legal counsel, to be provided to board members on our desks, or by email, prior to our next meeting. Just, we have the rules as you interpret them. I would love to have a copy of them, since we are in the absence of an attorney right now, to read from my own interpretation as we participate in these discussions. Second, I had a point of clarification I wanted to make as to why this issue, the conversation of recruitment benefits, was sent to Human Resources, which is the committee that I chair, and I was the maker of the motion. Just wanna make sure we avoid any revisionist history. I made the motion, I sent the motion to committee, because the vibe of this room, the conversation that was had, is multiple members of this board were unwilling to support recruitment initiatives for our Police Department going forward. That was, that was the conversation that was had, is the recruitment benefits that we have, and have in place, and have budgeted for, were not, folks didn't wanna see it go forward. So I just want to be clear, that this issue was not sent to committee for discussion very specifically of these two benefits. I made the motion to send this to committee, for the explicit purpose of discussing recruitment as a whole, as these are efforts that were very clearly successful. I found myself flabbergasted that members of this board, in this room, were unwilling to support our Police Department, as many have campaigned on. So I just wanna make sure people know, that that was sent to committee for a very explicit reason, and it was not the reason that Alderwoman Davis did read from the minutes. So if that was not clear, I apologize for not making a statement earlier, when we could've made adjustments to those minutes. I guess it's up to interpretation on how people may read them, and I wanted to clarify that as the maker of the motion. Thank you.
Okay, so we've had quite a discussion on the merits of that whole issue up to this time, so what I'm gonna do is ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes, we're adjourned.